Board of Education meeting to order at seven o'clock on the dot. I am so excited because we have so many hiring items and we have an incredible group of people that I believe are going to be joining our team pending a vote. So excited. Okay, first we need to start with roll call. Ms. Hokor, would you help us with that, please?
Present.
Here. Ms. Ferris Highland.
Here.
Dr. Edsel.
Here.
Ms. Cormier.
Here.
Ms. Fink.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Laco.
Here.
Great, thank you. Trustee Fink, would you help us by reading the mission statement of East Lansing Public Schools, please?
Our mission is nurturing each child, educating all students, and building world citizens.
Wonderful. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Would someone be interested in offering a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the June 26, 2023 regular meeting as, regular meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I'm going to call that move by trustee Martin seconded by a hair by trustee Cormier. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to approve the agenda carries. Next is the approval of minutes from the June 12, 2023 regular meeting. Motion.
I'll move the Board of Education approves the June 12, 2023 regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Move by trustee Edsel, seconded by trustee Lyons. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
Oh, good call. Okay, the motion carries for the approval of, for the minutes from June 12. Thank you for making that note, trustee Cormier. Next on the agenda is recognition. Trustee Ferris Highland, you want to take it away?
You know, we don't have any that was submitted to me this week. I know Kelly had invited Ms. Tina Crawford as she's retiring to attend, but she was unable to, so there are no items of recognition tonight.
Okay, well, we thank Ms. Crawford for her years of service. I don't know how many, but I'm seeing a lot. And we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Laco.
Thank you. I want to start by sharing an upcoming event that will be hosted here this August. Communities and Schools is partnering with some of our local businesses to hold a backpack and school supply collection and giveaway this summer for ELPS students. The event is scheduled for August 11th and is targeted toward the collection of a specific list of school supply items for middle school and high school students, along with backpacks. Communities and Schools is collaborating with TechSmith, Michigan State University, CADA, and MSU FCU in this project. More details will be coming, so watch our Facebook page and my summer communication for updates. And a little update on our school-based health clinic. Last week, we held our third meeting with a district advisory group for the addition of a school-based health clinic in East Lansing High School. This project is a result of a partnership between the Ingham County Health Department and East Lansing Public Schools. The committee voted to apply for funds to support the full set of services that can be offered in a school-based clinic. That includes five full-time staff, a nurse, nurse practitioner, mental health provider, and two medical assistants that also serve other roles like receptionists. Should the grant be awarded, we expect services to be available in early 2024. And a little bit on our new school safety and mental health positions, like many school districts, school districts across the state, ELPS was awarded grant funds to improve safety and security and mental health and wellness for students and staff. These funds have restrictions on their use, and they can only be used to supplement, not supplant, current services, infrastructure, et cetera. These funds remain in the governor's, senate's, and house's budget proposals for 2023-24, so we expect to secure additional funds next school year as well. Three grant-funded positions are currently posted through the availability of these funds, one being a Director of Health and Safety, one being a District Mental Health Coordinator, which also will be replacing our former District Wellness Leader position as she resigned recently, and also an Elementary Behavior Coach. These positions were determined and decided upon based on both identified needs from our school safety assessments and then also from input on some of our surveys that we gave to staff this year about some of the post-COVID impacts that they were feeling in the buildings that maybe still needed more student support. So details about each of these positions can be found on our website under employment, and they close this Wednesday at 4:00 PM. And one last thing, a central office will be closed Monday, July 3. Current hours through July 21 are Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4. And that's all I have tonight.
Great, are there questions from board members for the superintendent?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Under the community and schools backpack giveaway, CADA is listed as a, as a sponsor or collaboration with. Are we looking at like bus passes or is that looking at bus passes for maybe kids that don't live in the district or need to get to a job or something outside of the district after school?
No, it's just for this backpack giveaway, so they're looking at helping us transport the items from collection sites to a central site where they'll then, they can be distributed through a pickup, or if families can't get there, we will take them in and get them to kids as they return as well.
My second question was the new Elementary Behavior Coach. How will that align with all the PBIS professional development that's going on? Is that person then kind of overseeing that?
It's part of it. If you look at the job posting, there are some responsibilities that align with both, not just the PBIS, but also our implementation of Second Step and really infusing or fusing those together, infusing Second Step and PBIS through all of the content, teaching lessons that we do, so that Second Step isn't seen as a standalone curriculum, because really for it to have an impact, it really needs to be infused into everything we're doing, you know, throughout the building. So that person will help facilitate that across the elementary schools in terms of the PBIS stuff. You know, we kind of historically or traditionally have also called it culturally responsive PBIS, but we've really taken that off intentionally because we look through everything through that lens, so don't feel the need to add that on as a, okay, we're doing culturally responsive PBS. Everything that we do, it should be culturally responsive and that we don't name it that. So that person will also have training and professional learning in the, and hopefully some experience and prior trainings around diversity, equity, inclusion, and social justice as well, so that that lens will really inform all the PBIS work.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Other questions? I have a couple. So for the school-based health clinic, so this is something that is, the funds are from the ISD?
Uh, no, the funds are from DHHS, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
Okay, so, but other districts, other schools may be applying for these funds, too?
No. So they do, like, we were identified as a district and as a community who could utilize additional health support for families within our community. So Ingham County Health Department reached out specifically to us and asked to partner with this on first a planning grant. So they applied for the planning grant, received the planning grant, which is why we're now spending time doing some initial planning, and then they'll submit for the full grant in October. But it is, we're the only one, well, there's one more in the area, it's not in our county, but they are not, it's not maybe on the same timeline quite as we are. They're a little, maybe need to do some additional work to get to the point where we're at. We've had really good attendance and support of some families in the district for this advisory committee, and in fact, last week, our meeting was held at Sexton High School, so we could actually see a school-based clinic. And so instead of imagining what it would look like, we met and had our meeting at Sexton High School where there is one. And so we, the, the Health Department actually completes the application for the funds. We sign on as a partner for it, but districts can't apply on their own for them.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And probably when we get a little closer, a little further down the road in terms of developing and submitting the application, I'll have the folks who are experts in it from, like, we have the key people from the Health Department that have been running the meetings along with like a statewide facilitator for this kind of work, and so I'll have them come and kind of supplement some comments with a presentation and Q and A session, because they're way better at answering these questions, because they've gone through this, as I'm just learning as I go through what we'll be providing and what the, what the questions are, what the limitations of a school-based health clinic are, what they, you know, ages of consent, and how it all works in partnership with either other health providers, or insurance, or Medicaid, or all of those different types of questions. Bottom line is nobody gets turned away.
That's amazing.
Yes.
So exciting.
So big things, like I know that some of the feedback on the needs assessment they did or on the survey they sent out, families really expressed a need for utilizing them for athletic physicals, just to be able to do that immediately and, you know, and so that kids aren't missing out or sitting out for a few days. So like, kind of removing some of those barriers so that kids can access our activities is a big piece of it. But also, you know, they said if you've got a staff member with a sore throat one day and needs a strep test, you know, you can come down. It's targeted for five to 25, but they'll also, they won't turn away, you know, if they have capacity to help our school staff and, but it'll be open, there's going to be an entrance both from the inside for students, but also for the outside for families. And they'll be, they'll be open, I think, year-round. I don't remember their hours, but they'll have their own hours and be available for others in the community, too.
Would, would they be a direct connection for referrals for mental health services?
Yes.
So we either identify a child in the system that might need that, or as we have had in the past, a child that comes to us for expulsion or suspension, that would be a dead, direct connection that they could then refer them out?
Yep. And they will provide those services. They have a mental health, full-time mental health provider right in-house, too. So that will be a really good resource for us to have access to.
Very cool.
The more details I hear, the more excited I get, and I was already pretty excited.
I know. The more meetings I attend, the more I learn about it and can come back and share more, but it's probably be good, maybe in August, for us to bring those folks in to give us some status updates and, and maybe some of the district stakeholders who have been attending, you know, those meetings, because a lot of them who are coming, or the handful who are coming, many of them are in the health field, so they know the questions to ask, you know, and they have some of those details that they wonder, you know, or wonder about that I don't even know yet to ask. So they've been really helpful, it's been a really good group.
Well, they better give us some money, that's.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Super exciting.
Awesome. Other questions for the superintendent about the superintendent's report?
Just to follow up on the questions from trustee Edsel and trustee Chambers, this, and I know I didn't contact you in advance, so I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the planning grant, the phase you're on is making the plan. Is that a pretty thoroughly hatched out, is that a fully hatched out plan, or is it?
Not yet.
When will that?
I think the grant application is due in October, so by October. Like, we just, the committee just voted last week to, because you can run a couple different levels of this. You could have a very scaled back, kind of more skeletal version up to this full five-person, full-time staffing model. And so I think it, I think the grant for that was $275,000 a year. It doesn't quite cover all of it, but they, but they do bill insurance for families who have insurance, you know, so they have other ways where they do bring money in, but they won't turn away a family for not having insurance. They won't charge copays, you know, they don't do that right, you know, there, but they will bill insurance or Medicaid if they have access to. But, so the planning grant, I believe, I think it's due in October, so that's why as we have a couple more meetings, we have another one set up for July and August. We've been meeting monthly, but we'll have more details, and before we apply for that, I'll make sure they come and present the, like, the summary of the application.
That was my next question.
Perfect.
Thank you.
No problem. Awesome. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda and then a few action items, all, most of which relate to hiring. You guys know it's my favorite. So we'll start with the consent agenda. There is no discussion on consent agenda items, so if there's no objection, what we'll do is just take these up in one motion.
I move that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda to include the following: A, new hires, hiring of Katarina Brazay, 1.0 FTE PE teacher at East Lansing High School at BA Step 13, effective August 21, 2023; hiring of Matthew Himmelsbach, 1.0 FTE art teacher at Red Cedar Elementary at BA Step 9, effective August 21, 2023; and the hiring of Jennifer Petros, 1.0 FTE guidance counselor at East Lansing High School at MA Step 9, effective August 28, 2023. And item B, the Michigan High School Athletic Association membership resolution for 2023-2024.
Second.
This move by trustee Edsel, seconded by trustee Lyons. There is no discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda items, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? The motion carries. We are handling these hires in two batches, so we have the teacher hiring, and then we have a few other action items related to some district leadership positions, so we'll do those separately. But I think we have some of the teachers here, actually, I think all three of them are here. Not to put anybody on the spot, but there are hordes and thousands of people watching from home who would love to see your faces, so if you would be so kind, you could come up to the podium and just introduce yourselves, and that would be great. Come together as a group, that's fine. Yay! All right. Ms. Brazey, too? Yep, you, too, yep, you don't get out of it.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Petros, I am returning.
I was going to say, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm super excited to be back. My daughter and I moved to Atlanta, not a fan, came back. So I'm happy to be back, thank you.
Welcome back, Jen.
Welcome back.
Hi, I'm Matthew Himmelsbach. I'm coming back again. I've been at Red Cedar Elementary, and I'm super excited to be teaching art. Thank you.
Thank you. We're thrilled to have you. Yes.
Hello, I'm Katrina, but everybody calls me Katie. I will be teaching PE and Health at the high school.
Awesome. Yay! Welcome to the team.
Just to clarify, we, they're in two batches because consent fall under like our collective bargaining agreements, and the other positions do not, which is why they're in two different batches. These are, the others are under at-will contracts, so that's why they're just separated a little differently.
It's a bureaucratic thing, it's not personal. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. If, I think we have at least one blue form. If you are interested in giving public comment, there are blue forms in the back in the little tray, please fill one out, and while you're doing that, I will read our public comment statement. This is the opportunity to address the board. Speakers are to confine their remarks to five minutes. If a speaker requires more than five minutes after all other persons who have requested to speak during this part of the meeting have spoken, that speaker will be allowed additional time. The superintendent or other district staff may comment to clear up or avoid significant misunderstandings. There is no, oh, there are no, there are no blue forms, okay.
In case you wanted to, that was the rules.
Yeah. Yes, okay. All right. Great, then we'll move to action items, which are also about hiring, and I'm just as excited about these. And these, I think we should take up individually, we have separate motions for them. So we'll start with the Associate Principal position for Mr. Lampy. Sounds like some wild support coming from the.
Show us how you really feel.
So I move the Board of Education approve the contract for Mr. Jeffrey Lampy, East Lansing High School Associate Principal as presented.
Second.
Oh, man, fighting over it. Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Edsel, we still have to vote on it. Is there any, is there any discussion? Let's get to the vote. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Lampy, welcome back officially, permanently. You've been doing a great job, and we're so thrilled to have you and the job permanently. Do you want to come up and say anything? Yeah.
I think the last time you came up, you said you were going back to teaching, which was a whole fake left go right thing.
Well, thank you. I'm super, I'm, I'm super humbled and blessed to serve in this manner, and I love this community, love the students here, we have the best students, best staff around, and super thankful. My wife Stephanie's here, and she's an amazing teacher at Marble Elementary School, and I'm so thankful, so I can't wait to get started, and I love the admin team and just super blessed, so appreciate your support, and I'm going to do the best job I can, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lampy. Yay! Okay, action item B relates to the High School Dean of Student Success.
I move the Board of Education approves the contract of Ms. Dorkus Schumake, East Lansing High School Dean of Student Success as presented.
Second.
I probably butchered it, but.
It's moved by trustee Edsel, seconded by trustee Ferris Highland. Is there any discussion? Okay, then we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the contract for Ms. Dorkus Schumak? Is it Schumak or Schumak? Schumake. We both got it wrong. Schumake, exactly how it looks, so that's our bad. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to the team, Ms. Schumake. And if you wanted to come to the podium, we've created a nice little precedent here. I love it. So it's a welcome to East Lansing, kind of, because you're already in East Lansing, but a welcome to.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here and to serve in this capacity, and I'm looking forward to just a wonderful school year, getting to know our students. I have some students here, and this is the first time that I'll be working with my children, so I'm ready to just crush their whole high school career. No, but I'm excited that they see me in this role, and I'm just prepared to just have an amazing school year, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schumake. It's not exactly the same, but I like to crush my child's soul, too, when I see him. So, yes. And then the final action item related to hiring today relates to the Dean of Student Success at the middle school, and I would accept a motion for this item, please.
I move the Board of Education approves the contract for Mr. Melvin White, McDonald Middle School Dean of Student Success as presented.
A second. I'm going to call that move by trustee Ferris Highland, I'm not seconded by trustee Cormier, I'm going to call it. Is there any discussion? All in favor of this action item, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously, hooray! Mr. White! Come on up!
Um, I'm just excited, do I got to bend down to talk to my? I'm just excited for this new chapter, you know, at the school and in my life, because I have to do the best job I can and, you know, just trying to build that positive culture at the school. That's all.
Yeah, work on your game, because Marcus is coming for you next time.
Yeah, there are going to be a lot of kids who are going to be disappointed not to see you in your previous role, but will be thrilled to see you in this new role. Amazing, well, I can't say anymore about how excited I am for these hires, I've said it all already. Just so excited.
Tell us one more time.
Super excited. But I did wonder, Dory, I'm putting you on the spot, but these Dean of Student Success positions are new. Is there anything you wanted to say about that process?
They are new. You know, they're, uh, really, you know, looking at how we identified some gaps in support for our students at our, you know, secondary level, and also looking for folks to coordinate some of the supports we do have in place so that they're not, there aren't gaps or overlaps in some of the support we already do have in place, like through advocates and communities and schools and, and other interventions we have. So we're really looking for folks to, you know, come in and, and, and learn about our systems and our, our approach to things and what we have in place, but help us really structure it so that we can provide the appropriate and as much support as possible to meet the needs, the individual needs of each student, and to have someone at each building really head that up while acting as a really strong liaison between students and families in the school. And so I know we are, I mean, we know Melvin here in the district already, and so I'm super, you know, confident he's the perfect person for this role, and, and we know Dorkus a little, but I was telling her before this meeting started that I, right, I sat in on her second round interview, and within, I think, three to four days after that, I ran into her, well, one over Zoom, and then one at just a gathering I was at, her, two, like, I think, pretty close colleagues that she works with, and both of them, you know, when they said, "Hold it, you're from East Lansing? You're taking Dorkus from us," and, you know, they were both, but in a joking way, and in a way, and they, they both, I think, one, one of the emails I got, you know, in response was, "Hey, by the way, yes, I'll have coffee with you," and she's a rock star, you have got a rock star for, you know, you, and so I'm super excited about the potential, you know, as we create these new positions for Melvin and Dorkus to be able to, you know, kind of collaborate across 612 as well, as we provide transition, you know, support to our kids from the middle school to the high school, and, and, you know, see what we can do that we aren't doing yet. So, yeah, super excited about them. Yes, and everybody.
Well, and I've said before that we have, we're a district of many resources, and I'm just so pleased to see us using our resources in this way.
Yeah.
Yep, thanks.
Building positive school cultures is not easy work, and a lot of times, the movement that we make is really small, 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 but important, small, 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 but when we have the chance to hire people, I feel like we make big strides forward, and so that is why I'm so excited tonight to know all of the positivity that's going to come out of the force of the human resources that we have in these six positions, so, so great. Okay, we are going to move to, let me just, I know, we need to go home, we need to go home. Committee reports, academic tech, that's who is the?
Yes, we have, no, I have nothing to report, no meeting until sometime in August.
Okay, great. Facilities, Ferris Highland.
No report, next meeting is August 17.
Okay, finance, that's Edsel.
Just whipping through it.
I listen.
No report, we did not meet. I do not have the date of our next meeting, but I will buy our next.
Okay. Intergovernmental, trustee Fink.
We have not met since March still. We do not have a meeting scheduled at this time. Some updates of note are that on the 16th of June, the House Education Committee unanimously approved House Bill 4671, which would repeal the requirement that schools start after Labor Day unless they receive a waiver from the Michigan Department of Education. Also on the 16th, the House Criminal Justice Committee approved the Senate Bill 60, or Senate Bill 66, which would require materials related to sexual assault and harassment to be provided to students in grades six through 12, beginning in the 24, 25 school year. On the 17th, the Senate Civil Rights Judiciary and Public Safety Committee approved a package of bills that includes House Bill 4125. This bill states that a student cannot be suspended or expelled for more than 10 days for an action arising from an incident in which the student claims they were sexually assaulted unless the district considers the factors currently required for suspensions and expulsions longer than 10 days. On the 18th, the House Health Policy Committee began hearings on House Bill 4081, which would require all districts to maintain a ration of at least one school counselor for every 250 students enrolled.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, policy, I believe that's trustee Edsel again.
It is. We did meet June 21st. The records request form that was brought to us by LPAT, Troon Law Firm had some concerns about it aligning with state law. I have reached out to Troon to ask them to use that form and align it with state law and get back to us hopefully before our next policy meeting. In regards to our equity policy, because our goal setting was postponed. Um, in regards to our equity policy, because our goal setting was postponed, and that's the large part that we, we wanna still add to the policy. We put off significant discussion on equity policy until the rescheduling of goal setting, which at that point in time, we discussed being the 24th, but Dory was looking into that. And our next policy committee meeting will be the 25th. Hopefully, after that July meeting, um, we can bring the equity policy to the board in August. I talked about an onboarding policy for new uh, school board members to include tours of the buildings, meet with the superintendent, meet with the board president, attend new board, board member orientation from MASP, and then provide a list of suggested and other things to help people orient some, orient themselves to the school board. Um, I reached out to Trune about a um, uh, Dory and Glenn have done a training on uh, behavioral threat uh, scanner uh, to help to determine um, threats and looking at a policy that uh, would align with that. And so I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from Trune on that. We discussed um, the process for, it's kind of the same one we discussed here about how the schools of choice, permio boundary and non-resident students are placed into buildings, um, particularly at the elementary level. And that should we make an exception for a, a student who, uh, teacher teaches in the building and accidentally um, to overload a classroom in that manner, just does not seem to be um, a position that should be taken. We're still discussing the social media lawsuit after the Trune presentation, because uh, we have since learned that participation in that lawsuit requires a three-hour survey by the district and the benefit may be minimal as the damages are limited to lost state aid due to social media threats or that led to closures or damages from challenges. And so we need to discuss further whether or not that uh, commitment and being part of that, what's considered a mass actions, mass action versus class action would be worthwhile. So we're gonna discuss that again at our next meeting as well. Our next meeting will be July 25th at noon.
Awesome.
And I did confirm goal setting. Yup, I have been able to confirm that, so I'll get it on calendars. But it is scheduled for July 24th, um, 3:30 to 6:30. So it's before our board meeting that day.
3:30?
3:30 to 6:30, so that will give us a little.
Offer.
Break time before this meeting starts. I'll get it put out on calendars and more details too.
Thank you.
Yes, so it's just a rescheduled one from whenever that was.
From COVID.
Whenever I had COVID, yes. Yes.
I have to ask Tara when I had COVID, because she gave it to me.
Or maybe you gave it to me. Um, okay, are there any announcements from board members or the superintendent this evening? Okay, then we will move into the process of moving into closed session pursuant to state law. And that means all of you guys get to roll out of here while we stick around here. But I will.
Motion for that.
Sorry, Jay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
You could stick around and come back after.
Thanks.
No, okay. Um, but I would do need to take a motion related to, well, let's.
I'll move the Board of Education meeting closed session for discussion related to the superintendent's evaluation as permitted by Section 8A of the Meetings Open Meetings Act, Michigan Open Meetings Act.
Moved by trustee Edsel, seconded by trustee Lyons. Is there any discussion? They're gonna have so much fun out there. Um, all in favor, please indicate by saying.
Roll call though.
Oh, roll call, yup, see that there.
Dr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Dr. Edsel?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris Hyland?
Yes.
Ms. Fink?
Yes.
Dr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Okay, then we will move into closed session. And, oh, thanks, Jay. Saving me a trip back there.
Time is 7:34, I'm just gonna note that on this document.
Tell them we're for real this time.
Sorry, my bad.
All right, so as I said, uh, we'll go through the areas. What I believe I heard, um, so if you have uh, something vastly different than what I'm spouting off here, then uh, feel free to uh, yell.
I tried to take my own little notes, so.
And so like I said, when I get done with this tonight, we'll have a score. And then I will email a copy of this, uh, along with some of the things that I heard and some recommendations moving forward to uh, your superintendent and board president sometime tomorrow. All right, so in the area of A1, uh, policy involvement, three and a half. Goal development.
You just don't, if we agree, we just don't say anything.
Yep, if you don't, if I'm not hearing anything, I'm just gonna look at the bottom, I'm just gonna go with it.
And my, and secretary, am I taking, in place of Kelly, doing all these notes and.
I've got it here, so if you, if you wanna back me up, that's fine. But if you're comfortable without, then that's fine as well.
Okay, all right, I, I, yeah, because I don't know if I can move that fast and I don't wanna slow you up, so if you have it.
Yeah, you're good. Send it to.
Perfect, I got it, I'm taking.
I'm gonna say, okay.
So do what you're doing.
Okay, A2, goal development, three and a half. A3, information, three and a half. A4, materials and background, four. A5, forward questions, four. A6, forward development, three and a half. Okay, so for the area of A, that's a 3.66666667. Community relations. B1, parent feedback, four. B2, communication with community, three. B3, community feedback, three. B4, media relations, three and a half. B5, district image, four. B6, approachability, four. Okay, so for area B, 3.583333333. Staff relations, area C. C1, staff feedback, four. C2, staff communications, three and a half. C3, personnel matters, three and a half. Delegation of duties, C4, three and a half. C5, recruitment, three and a half. C6, labor relations, four. C7, visibility, three. Okay, so for area of C, that is a 3.57142857. All right, D, business and finance. D1, budget development and management, four. D2, budget reports, four. D3, financial controls, four. D4, facility management, three and a half. And D5, resource allocation, four. All right, that gives us for area D, an overall of a 3.9. All right, area E, instructional leadership. E1, performance evaluation system, A4. E2, building level leadership, three and a half. E3, staff development, three and a half. E4, school improvement, three. E5, curriculum, four. E6, instruction, three and a half. E7, student feedback, three. E8, student attendance, three. E9, support for students, three. E10, professional knowledge, four. Okay, so for the area of E, that is a 3.45. So the areas A through E, overall score is a 3.621547619.
Can you say that one more time?
Yeah.
3.621547619, a 91%. Moving into area G, which is our other required components, student growth, 3.5. Progress towards goals, 3.5. So our professional practice score, 3.621547619. That's 50% of the evaluation. Student growth at three and a half is 40% of the evaluation. Progress toward addition by goals is three and a half, that's 10% of the evaluation. Our total score is a 3.56077381. That translates to an 89%, which puts us at the top end of effective.
So you don't just round out? You do it by the percentage of that.
Yup, you do it by the percentage. So with that, I will turn it over to the board, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, we appreciate your assistance with this. And so now, if I'm understanding correctly, we need to offer a motion related to the superintendent evaluation?
Dory, did you check all the math while you were going through that? No? You double-checked your math? Okay, just, just checking.
Uh, if you, if you'd like, we can, we can go through the numbers one more time, make sure that I didn't input anything incorrectly.
But are we? Are we held to your interpretation of the, like, your rounding? Can we round ourselves? Do we have our own autonomy here in how we interpret the numbers?
I'm going to uh, allow you as much flexibility as you need necessary. As long as you keep in mind that uh, there's always the possibility that by making any kind of adjustments other than what is in the evaluation instrument does open you up to the possibility of um, somebody second guessing your process. I guess is the most politically correct way I can put it.
Well, I think, help me out here, team. I think our options are, we can, someone is ready to offer a motion tonight, we can do that. We also have a little bit of time before the deadline. If people need, if there is not readiness to offer a motion tonight and we want to think about this and reconvene, I think we can, that's another option.
Did you ever total your scores in yourself avail? What are your thoughts on an effective? I believe you've had an highly effective the last two years, three years, four years, five years, six years?
Yeah.
Okay, so. If she has been affected, highly affected, for the past three evaluations, then technically, you do not need to conduct an evaluation this year.
No, we did that last year.
That was last year, okay, so we're in that, okay.
I'm on a diptych already.
Okay. All right. Okay, so last year was the year that she skipped?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so this is the year that's, okay. All right. So in that case, um, you know, if you uh, would like to take some time to uh, to ponder um, the ratings uh, that have been presented tonight, then that would be appropriate. And then you could reconvene and uh, and continue a discussion. You could continue to have a discussion right now, uh, if you think there's any areas in which you would like to change your scores. I think maybe I undersold the facility management's score.
Yeah, I, we're, I had a 3.0.
3.5.
And D4. I hit it at a four initially.
Uh, okay, so are we talking D4? D4. All right, so uh, can I have a consensus on a four for D4?
I gotta find that. I had, I had a four, so.
Yeah, you had a four.
I say yes.
After many, many years of experience in the facilities committee, I think it's a four. Okay. So do I have a consensus of the board to?
Facility management, yeah, I thought we talked about that, we moved it to a four, no?
At a four?
Yeah.
That's fine, I'm good with a four. I also, if we're gonna be reconsidering some of these instructional management, whatever that one is, the last one, there are some there that I, you know, Dory, appreciate your um, honesty and self-reflection with some of the threes there, but I don't.
All right, so let me, uh, before we continue, just let me reflect uh, that the change in the facility management uh, score um, is now, uh, let's see. Put the superintendent at. One sec. Okay, so uh, the justice score for the A through A, A through E areas is now at a 91%. Overall, we are still at an 89%. So, okay, I'll continue with the instructional, you said, which areas are the instructional?
Um, there were, in particular, the ones that are rated at a 3.0. None of those that I have at a 3.0, some I had at a 3.5, and so, um.
Okay, so we can start with E4, school improvement?
Yes, here's one where I had a 3.5, we had the overall rating as a 3.0.
On E4?
Yeah, E4.
Okay, do I have a consensus on a 3.5?
I have.
For E4?
Support of 3.5.
I do as well.
3.5, 3.5, 3.5, okay, so for E4, I'm going to make a change to a 3.5. Okay, the next three was uh, student feedback.
Yeah.
E7?
Yeah. I had a.
I thought that was a 3.5.
No, it was a 3.0.
It was a 3.0, oh, I thought we talked about that though, no?
Mm-mm. So I, you know, partly I sit on academic tech and that committee has students on it, you know, and I just, um, I think that there are a lot of different ways that student feedback is incorporated, so.
I had that as a four to begin with, I was surprised.
I had it also.
I also had it as a four, to be honest, so, but.
Give yourselves two and a half.
Yeah, that was a two and a half, I thought we moved it to a four.
I know, I'm gonna push against you a little bit here, Dory. Um, is there, how do we feel about a 3.5 or a four for that item?
For student feedback?
Yeah, E7.
Okay, do I have a consensus on a four?
Four, four, four.
Four?
Um, can I just say something?
Yeah.
And I realize I'm not in a consensus, but I'm a little uncomfortable that we're going back and changing things after we went through as a consensus, because we didn't like the score.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because it's not just one, we're going back and changing multiple.
Okay. All right, are we content with the scores that we have then? I'm gonna put that one back as a three. Okay, so making that change to the area in...
No, because I thought, so when you were whipping through the scores, there were some that I thought. So what I'm uncomfortable with is that your interpretation of a consensus to a certain point was not exactly my interpretation to a consensus. So I thought we had agreed on odd fours at the finance one, and when he said three, I was like, okay. I thought that this two and a half was higher than a three and probably a three and a half. And so I was interpreting this as maybe we were questioning how he had interpreted consensus on some of these numbers.
What did we have student feedback as?
He said a three.
And I had three and a half on mine.
And I had a four.
I had a four on mine.
That's what I'm saying, is that it's a...
Since we're in open session, I think, you know, for the sake of transparency, when we were reaching consensus during closed session, there was no formal voting happened. It was just, it was a round robin discussion with people suggesting their numbers and our facilitator doing a great job, but also interpreting what the consensus, what he believed the consensus was. So I, so I understand where the lack of clarity comes from, but I think it's appropriate to go back through and evaluate, especially on the ones that we have questions about whether there really was that consensus of that number.
I also don't want to skip over trustee Cormier's concern about going back in the process. I think that that is a valid observation here.
Yeah, it just, it felt reactionary, like we didn't like the score and then went back to change it. That's how it feels.
Yeah, well, and I think for me, I was a little bit unsure about the overall process. This is the first time that we're going through it. And so my expectation was that these individual items scores, I guess I was more willing to give on because at the end, I didn't realize how tied those numbers were going to be to the overall rating. I thought we would have more independent evaluation of the overall score, so that was surprising to me. Leaves us in a little bit of a conundrum here, and so I recognize that we're in a little bit of...
So I think it's important that we make sure that we're, that we're happy that we did truly come consensus in some of these scores. And so if we're having some misgivings or we think that maybe we need to, you know, relook at these, I don't necessarily think that that's a bad thing. I think we can go back through some of these scores and just reaffirm that we are clearly on a consensus on this. And if we are, then we'll leave it where it is. If we think that as a board we need to make an adjustment, then we can make an adjustment. So we haven't set anything in stone yet, you haven't formally approved the agenda yet. We're still in that, kind of making sure that we have the scores that we believe are appropriate. So if we need to revisit any of those, I think that that's, that's still appropriate.
I'd like to say one other thing as far as, so I, as the question I asked earlier, we don't round up, like, anything three point five and above would be highly effective. Is why I didn't bring up any question during it, because as I was running my numbers here on the page, everything, three point six six seven, three point five blah blah blah, three point five, three point nine, three point four five, I averaged in my brain, he had a three point six, three point five, three point five. I thought we were at a highly effective. So I didn't question some of the things that might have been borderline, I just thought it was a done deal. And not that I'm saying it was a done deal, she has to have a highly effective, or it's a done deal, she has to have an effective. That the conclusion was there, so I didn't question a couple of the consensus scores that came out. My preference would be, I think there's been three that were brought up that a couple of us had concerns about, the four on the, on the D four. And there were two others in the, that she gave herself a two and a half, and I think several of us went three, five, or a four, and then there was one other, three point. And without giving us any numbers on that, to discuss whether or not we would want to change them, change them, give them the numbers, and then, you know, stick with, with that final outcome at that point in time.
The question lies in the student growth. Smart, the student growth was a three point nine three, and so I first thought that's the number we use here, so when you asked me, is that a four or a three point five? I went down, but I wonder, like, how is that? I just, I don't, how is that usually figured in and why don't we use the actual number of the student growth?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Or is it?
If that's the case, you would give yourself a four point oh.
I know, like, I just kind of half-assedly said, okay, three point five.
Yeah, I think you probably were a little generous in the opposite direction. Probably say with a four on that one, but three point nine. So what this comes down to is, if we found a majority of our teachers to be highly effective as it relates to student growth, then we're gonna find our billing principles highly effective as it relates to student growth, then we're gonna find our superintendent highly effective as it relates to student growth. So if we think that highly effective is the more appropriate here based on how we evaluated their teachers and how we evaluated our principals, then I think that a four in there would probably be, would probably be more relevant than that three and a half.
Yeah, because if we're at three point nine three and then we went down, that doesn't, yeah.
Forty percent weighted item.
Yeah, that would be a four point oh.
I guess for me, what I think is kind of concerning me is that it sounds like we are trying to get to a highly effective instead of just, this is the work and this is what was presented and this is what we're voting. So if we're trying to get to a highly effective, I don't necessarily agree with that being our approach to how we do an evaluation with the superintendent, I don't think that that is correct, so I would not like participate in that.
I wouldn't either, I think my, I have the same logic that you're applying, but maybe in a different way to say, like, I'm not trying to get to a highly effective. I had a highly effective rating, and all the way through, felt like we were rating her highly effective. And if the only reason why it's not coming out highly effective is because of the mathematical formulas that are being applied here, I'm not comfortable with that. So I'm uncomfortable with the idea of now we're kind of stuck in this, what do we do with this tool? And how do we, in my mind, make sure that our process is representative of what we intended? I'll speak for myself, how do I make sure for myself that how I am following this process represents what I intended to do when it hasn't? I don't know, and it comes down to not my ratings on the individual items necessarily, but the way the weighted averages and the formulas are being used. Had I maybe better understood how it was going to be calculated, I maybe would have pushed a little harder on some of these items, but like the three point five on the student.
The student growth, that one, that one took me off.
But I, none of this is comfortable for me, but it's not, I don't think it's about us trying to fudge the numbers, it's about the, the math of it.
Sure, so I think that a three point nine percent in the student growth more logically reflects a four point for the purpose of student growth as opposed to a three point five. But as this is your evaluation for your superintendent, I don't want to reject that. So if you believe that a three point nine is better reflected with a four for student growth instead of a three and a half, I think that that's appropriate.
So let me ask this question, did our teachers at a three point nine three receive a highly effective in that category?
They received a three point nine three, or whatever their score was that was weighted forty percent of it.
Went into the formula and then calculated as forty percent of their score as well.
And that's why you initially, you didn't write a three point five on there.
No, she had said we want to, I want to use three point nine three, and he said, we gotta pick a three point five to a four point.
And we instruct you to put in a three point nine three into that?
Let's see what happens if I do.
That's the only one that, yeah.
I'm uncomfortable with going back and changing numbers too, to be clear. But I also am more uncomfortable with an evaluation rating that doesn't match what I think was...
Right, I'm sorry, when you said number two?
Just changing numbers as well.
Oh, okay, all right.
T O O.
Yeah, if we put a three point nine three in there, which if that's, if that's the growth metric that you used for, for your teachers and for your staff, and if you're comfortable with that, then I don't anticipate there to be any problem with that. So if we change that to a three point nine three as opposed to a three point five that we had in there, then that will push it to an overall three point seven five oh two seven three eight one, which is a ninety four percent, and that does put her in the highly effective range.
So my question is, where did this three point five, three point nine percent come from? Because if this data is based off of the teachers' evaluations and the building principals' evaluations, they can't have a number over here and we give you a different number.
Right, their number, so teachers all got either a four, they can get a four, three, two, one. If they do student growth twice a year or have math handliteracy, they get the average, they could have three point five. So then for the principals, we take all of their teachers and average it together. And that's how the principals get their score, so they don't get a three point five or a four. They get whatever their average is, which would, and then for building administrators or district administrators, mine Glenn, NICS, who have instructional oversight and supervision responsibilities, ours is reflected on the hundred and ninety five teachers in the district, so we don't just take each buildings because they're weighted differently based on the number of teachers in the building. So this is a compilation of a hundred and ninety five threes, three point fives, fours of teacher-student growth data that averages to three point nine three.
And that is the number that you would have used in evaluating Glenn and?
That's the number I do, I use, yes.
Well, then that's the number we should use, where'd that number come from?
I, I didn't.
She said, I want to use three point nine three, and we were told.
He asked, no, he asked her three point five or four, and she lowered her own rating to three point five.
Yeah.
In closed session.
And, yeah.
So if the board is, if the board is comfortable with a three point nine in that slot based on how the administrators are evaluated as well, then I do believe that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
And so if we put the three point nine in there, then that does bring her into ninety four percent, which does put her in the highly effective range.
And that's returning all of the original numbers to what you read off to us.
We could, we could, I haven't, the only change I made was.
We only made one.
Right.
Was the facilities. We didn't make any other changes.
Well, I want to make sure, Amanda, if you want us to go back on that number to?
I'd prefer if we went back to where we were originally.
And are you comfortable with the, using the three point nine three instead of the three point five?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so business and finance, so that was facility management D four, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And that was a three and a half?
Three five.
All right, so that is a three five, so it does not have an impact on the overall rating of a ninety four percent. Just for clarity sake, one more time, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So no changes were made A through E. We made a change in the student growth number to the three point nine, three point nine three. And so then that gives us a, so the professional practice stays the same at three point six three six five four seven six one nine. Student growth goes to three point nine three. Progress toward addition by goals remains at three point five. So our new weighted score is three point seven four zero two seven three eight one. And then that translates to a ninety four percent, which puts us in the highly effective range.
I would like to make. You want to email those representatives about the student growth forty percent and this, you know, like, they, that should be across the board.
Like I said, there's a lot, they're also looking at, you know, the other year evaluations. So the thing there is that a lot of pushback from building principals and superintendents about the amount of time that it takes to evaluate every teacher every year. So if you go to every other evaluations and you can evaluate half the teachers this year, half the teachers next year, and if you go to every other year evaluations for teachers, that most likely means that we go to every other year evaluations for administrators as well. So it's something else they're talking about, so if that is of interest to you, again, definitely reach out to your legislator, or even just let, let our legislative team, Jen Smith, know, and she'll make sure that she, that she pushes that forward on behalf of the board.
We had a lot of, a lot of instructors who are on bionyl evaluations, like, prior to COVID, you know, from three years of highly effective ratings. And then when we got reprieve in two thousand twenty for evaluations, now what's happened is every, like, it used to be pretty balanced if they were on an off year, and now because of that skip year, it's super heavy one year and not so the next. Like, yes, it's very, very lopsided, it's like telling people, okay, bite the bullet and do somebody you don't have to two years in a row to try to, you know, balance it out long, long term, but.
And one of the other things, one of the other things we're talking about as well is driving that. Effective and only effective and ineffective. That's it, so another thing they've been talking about. So again, reach out to your legislators, reach out to our governmental lobby team, and they'd be more than happy to take that into consideration for sure.
Good.
Okay, all right, so back to the president.
Well, I guess I just want to check in with all of you before we move forward about how we're feeling about where we are and.
I'm glad for all this clarification, I mean, I'm glad that we went back to the student growth.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with changing that one, I'm good, I'm glad we moved everything else back to what it was, so.
So better with this, returning the scores, but maybe better representing what our intention was, or at least what my intention was.
I will now to speak up sooner.
I, I would have been a little bit.
I think, this is everyone's, have you done this before?
I have not done this tool, and not with a facilitator.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education award the superintendent a highly effective evaluation for the, is it for the year, for the two years?
Uh, just one year.
For the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Second, second, okay. The motion was moved by trustee Edsall, seconded by trustee Ferris Highland, is there any discussion? Then we will move forward with a vote, all in favor of the motion as presented by trustee Edsall, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, you all, we will, and then is there any further business? We will stand adjourned at nine twenty-five P M.
I thought you called it already.